Good evening, everyone. For Public Safety and Accountability. And I want to welcome you all to our third of four forums with the new superintendent Larry Snelling. And we're followed by CCPSA's ordinance. We have two, uh, we had great forums in Chinatown, the Dale and Center on the West Side of Chicago. There are lots of great questions from our audience. The purpose of today's meeting is for community members to share comments and questions to Superintendent Snelling. And to provide recommendations to the commission to inform our work with the superintendent. In previous sessions, we've had the privilege of hearing your perspectives on a range of critical topics. Including officer wellness, violence prevention, response tolerance, accountability, among others. Your input has been valuable in shaping our understanding of the community's needs and priorities. If you would like to make public comment tonight, as many of you are in the room, please fill out a comment card. Give it to one of our staff members who are walking around the room. And they will hand it in or hand it in at the check-in table. Uh, there are also some of my fellow commissioners who have joined us tonight who are seated in the audience. I see Commissioner Boyzah is here. Stand up for us. Thank you. I see also our former vice president, Commissioner Oswaldo Gómez. I think that may be all. I also would like to acknowledge any of our district councilors who are in the room. I did see a Ray Winters with fifteen. I'm not sure if there's anyone else. So, oh, Lee. That would mean so you all, raise your hands. Thank you all for being here tonight. So, on April seventh, twenty twenty-three, the Community Commission for Public Safety and Accountability initiated a nationwide search for the next superintendent of the Chicago Police Department. Throughout the process, the commission took great care to ensure the voices of the community were at the forefront. The commission conducted seven community listening sessions across the entire city, including virtual sessions and session. The commission met with three unions, with the three unions that represented the vast majority of smaller members of the Chicago Police Department. The commission developed and circulated several surveys to survey community members, organizations, members of law enforcement, and members of the new elected district councils and obtained over six hundred responses. The commission also met with thirty-four subject matter experts to held targeted listening sessions with over sixty-five organizations spanning across multiple sectors, including activists and advocacy groups, business groups, community-based organizations, faith-based organizations, labor groups, legal aid providers, and social service agencies. On July twenty-seventh, the commission nominated three people to serve as superintendent, including then-at-the-time Chief Larry Snelling. On August thirteenth, Mayor Brandon Johnson selected Chief Snelling to be Chicago's next public superintendent. Chief Snelling was unanimously confirmed by the City Council on September twenty-seventh. I would like to invite Superintendent Snelling to share some brief remarks before we move into any further questions.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Sorry. Um, I'd like to thank the military, um, for hosting this. We have a lot of people here. I look forward to hearing what you have to say, your questions. Um, this is important. It's important moving forward. And we talked about this before. You know, as a commander in the, uh, Eaglewood District, having seen a lot of the things that I saw not only growing up in Eaglewood, but as the commander of the district and prior to that, a lieutenant and as a tactical officer and a beat officer in the Southern District, I understand the importance of what we need to do to grow. What we need to do to get by in these communities and to start trying to uplift some of the things that are going on in those communities. I was recently over in Eaglewood and saw a store that had vegetables and fresh fruit. Um, it's a very, it's a very nice store right along the sixty-third and Third Corridor. And I see some growth over there. I'm proud to see that and I want to continue to see that type of growth in these neighborhoods. It's going to be important moving forward to make sure that the people in marginalized communities are respected because that is a huge part of what's going on with the development of officers, especially new officers. Um, and that goes along with wellness. We have to hire the best and the brightest. And then we have to train those officers. We have to train them according to the needs and then we have to make sure that there's levels of accountability with that. This is the work that we're looking to do. I've been there a little over six months. And I find that the work that we're doing is moving. We've got a lot more work to do. We have a lot more development, um, to create. We have a consensus pretty right now. And we have, we had, uh, a meeting on that just today. And we need to move forward. We are reaching out to anyone who is willing to help those people, especially those who are here today. When we put things out for public comment, we would like to get your comments. We're not getting a lot of that. We would like to get your feedback. It would be very helpful for us to move forward in this process. So I won't talk too much longer because I know there's a lot of questions, but I'm sure people have questions. They're concerned about this. I'm looking forward to answering those questions.
Thank you, Superintendent Snelling. So the commission will now provide an opportunity for the public to ask Superintendent Snelling questions and to make comments. Anyone with a comment will have two minutes to speak. When I call your name, I'll send you line up to the microphone. Can we? Microphone over here to my left. Okay. So the first three names I will call Kobe, Ademola, Miracle B, and Jazz Nefis.
All three of us. Good evening, everyone. My name is Kobe Ademola. Um, I live in a rural community, uh, growing up in rural Oklahoma, uh, town. And, you know, I care about my city. Uh, I'm here today, superintendent, to really push the idea of rapid response in the sense when, when our happens in my community on behalf of the police. And more specifically, we know tomorrow, at least in the table, that should be, uh, being killed. And no one's seen the video yet, but worried about the effect, right? And without much of that, but a respect for kids back, we can still talk about whether real transparency helps with the animal causes, right? There's things that can happen to ensure infants like this, that, you know. First of all, we know in the Southern District, there has most stock of people with traffic stops, right? We call it racial profiling, people making safety, the safety stop. But we know what it is. It's predominantly black individuals in the stop, by the way, it's alleged to be a single broken tail light, et cetera, et cetera, right? So that's one policy. One thing they didn't say could happen in the meetings, which is a reduction or the elimination of those types of traffic stops, right? Period. We can find another entity to do that work where there's people with guns, fully booked, and escalating to something else, right? Two, those officers are destined to do the politics that I have now. But we, once we see where it really went down, we already know we need those officers fired immediately, right? They don't need to be given a paycheck while we even go through trial to get to the point where we already know. We're in a city where we saw a kid boy being murdered, not with justice, but climbing down on so many guys. So that and reducing money for the police, we need those resources to go and talk and do it in some other ways. So nothing, a lot of it has become the absolute threat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll address a couple of things. Um, one of the things that we are addressing are those traffic stops. Right now, here today, we're down forty-six thousand traffic stops from last year. I've addressed this issue. Our officers are getting trained on it. Everything that we do should be about reasonable, articulate, suspicion of probable cause. Within that, where we've seen the reduction of forty-six thousand traffic stops, we've also seen an increase in felony arrests by nine percent. We've seen an increase overall of arrests, eighteen percent. We've seen a fourteen percent increase in gun recoveries and gun arrests. Now I say that because with the reduction of forty-six thousand traffic stops and an increase in gun arrests and felony arrests, it says that we're going in the right direction and we're focusing on the problems that we need to focus on in, in these communities. Now, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that we are where we need to be. We've got a lot of work to do. We have a lot of work to do. And I'm willing to do that work. But what we have to understand is we have officers who have been trained to do particular things, uh, fresh out of the academy. We have to train those officers out of that, to train them into something new. So when we are training officers and we're looking at the habits that is created based on what they've been doing, in order for them to learn new things, we've got to get them to unlearn the old things. So we're working toward that right now, uh, but there's a lot of work to do. So, um, the other, violence prevention, working with groups, working groups, they're, they're raising close to a hundred million dollars for violence prevention groups. I've been working with violence prevention groups since I was a commander of the Southern District, also when I was an area deputy chief in the area two. And there are particular groups, I don't like to call them all out, but are a target area one that I work with. With, and, and listen, we've got people in groups here sitting right there in front, they do it safely. They do great work in the communities and we have to start partnering with these people. Now, I get it, there is a trust factor when it comes to partnering with the police. And there are some people that no matter what happens, they're not going to partner with us. That's fine. But what we need to do is stay diligent and making sure that every police officer out there is a community police officer. We have to make sure that our officers are engaging respectfully and constitutionally with every single thing that they do. So I hear you.
Okay. Good afternoon, my name is Miracle Boy. I'm twenty-two years old. I'm an organizing advocate, as well as a trainer towards a dozen practitioners. This is spontaneous for me being here today, but I just want to give feedback to you. As I mentioned, there are forty-six thousand less police stops than the year before. And twenty-twenty-three, there was more than five hundred thousand traffic stops. Forty-six thousand cuts is only less than ten percent, less than eleven to six.
Less than a year.
Okay, but that's still not enough. And you also said you, you feedback from community members. Feedback is us coming to the city council, speaking in the city council. You mean they are not listening, uh, members not being allowed into city council chambers for whatever reasons, or restrictions being put in place on certain objects, whatever the case may be, people have to leave their laptops outside, not even tomorrow. This footage is going to be released. And once again, I'm standing here shaking because I was attacked by CPE when I was only eighteen, of freshman in college. And it was a pandemic. I was trying to talk to the superintendent and speaking to superintendents about what's happening in our community. Today, I've been done high. Speaking to fifteen, fourteen-year-olds about the violence that's happening in their communities and them saying, I want to escape this environment. This is not what I am. This is where I come from. And it's inevitable for me to be because these practices or these resources are not providing my community. I need you to do more and be more as a black man and as a superintendent, as a police officer of the city of Chicago. There's a lot of this kind of happening with the force of your officers not even being officers who punched me in twenty-twenty. He assaulted people more than ninety-two percent of more than other officers. He used approximately ninety-two percent of other officers. I wasn't able to identify him by face, but only by the tattoos in which he wore. And he, uh, he cowardly quit, divorced. He was not held accountable. So what will you do as superintendent to settle the cases from twenty-twenty? What will you do? I'm trying to find an elaborate sentence inside of going on Twitter rant and blowing the city council's beacon, shedding tears. I'm tired of shedding tears. What will you do as superintendent? Being appointed by Mayor Brandon Johnson, I need more from you as a young person. I'm twenty-two years old and I've been organizing since I was fourteen when my school was closed. I need you to understand where I'm coming from as a survivor, as a victim, and as a young black woman growing up in the city of Chicago. And that's what I need to do.
And let me just say, um, America ought to be beating out in front of the stadium when there was a police involved in the nation play. You know, very passionate for you over there. And I understand that passion. I see it. What I will tell you is this. There are a lot of things that the public doesn't necessarily understand. Now here, let me, let me, let me educate you. They were, we're not willing to listen and we're not willing to learn. Here's the deal. The Chicago Police Department, when it comes to firing someone, does not, the superintendent alone does not have that power. Other agencies, and if you look around the country, there are departments where they can walk out and say, this person is fired. There are oversight bodies here. There are things that have to happen through COBA, through the Corporation Council, the Police Board. All of those entities exist. And even in the final stages, if a superintendent recommends the separation of an office, it can still be overturned by the Police Board, which in certain cases, it has to. So what we need to do is understand that it's beyond just the Police Department. When you talk about not being able to get into the chambers, the city hall, that's not the Chicago Police Department. There are rules and regulations down there. I understand the, the, that tension. And the thing that you're doing, we just, uh, uh, Sunday, we just did a youth summit out of Olive Harley College. And we said, we talked to kids and these kids responded well. And there was some great kids that came there. And I did a forum where they got to sit there and talk to me. And I answered questions for these young people. And they had some great, great questions. They wanted to understand teen trends, having fun. Why would the police break up our fun? So, well, when you're jumping on top of someone's vehicle or you're fighting, we want you to be safe. These are the things that are important that we need to make sure. But these communications have to happen where we have to sit down and hear each other. Now, here's what I'm telling you that I'm willing to do. And I know that the minute I open my mouth sometimes, because I'm wearing this uniform, everybody thinks the next thing that's going to come out is a bunch of BS. But I'm telling you this as a man, as a human being, that I see the human beings in this room. I see the human beings out in the field when they're walking around. I see my officers who are also human beings. But what I do understand is this. In order for us to get along with each other, we have to understand each other, be willing to have those conversations. Because I can't improvise with Miracle Boy if I'm unwilling to listen to what she has to say. But I'm also, I'm also not going to learn who Superintendent Snelling is, Larry Snelling, unless I'm willing to have that conversation. This is the way that we grow. We're not going to grow if we continue to be adversarial. So let me explain something to you about this video that's coming out because we talk about transparency. When this unit happened, the first thing I do did was get my incident response team. And I said, I want you to take everybody's body on camera footage, put it together. Any other footage that we find, put it together. And we're going to put that on a video. We're going to put this public. But we're going to give you context. See, what you're getting right now is people posting things on social media without all of the facts. What I'm not going to do is sit here and frame everybody's mind about what is going to be in that video when it comes out. Because you're an intelligent woman and I know that you can make your own decisions when you look at that video. But it's not the things that you've been told. There are things that will omit it. Are there issues? There are always issues. There was a loss of life. Regardless to justification or not, I don't want to see anybody lose their lives. When we get to this point, something has gone wrong. It doesn't mean that someone has done wrong. It means something has gone wrong. And at this point, we need to figure out how we move forward. How we grow, how we train from this, how we develop. And how we now interact with each other in a city that we can't afford to see lose any more lives. We're down ten homicides right now from last year. We still have over a hundred people have been murdered in this city. We see death every day. I've, I, I, and an eleven-year-old boy stabbed to death. No outrage for that. A person should have never been out of prison. This young girl blessed to death, stabbed in the throat, and no outrage. Where outrage were the children more committed? I'm glad to see the second outrage from the people dying in this city that I see where there's a police who supports. If we want to be true to what I started, oh my. Not only where it's the police, we're going to come and protect them from what they jump. We're going to stand up instead of nothing, to nothing and protect our children. When are we going to do that? The moment that we come together and we start working together, that's when we get better. But we can have adversarial relationships all day. And I'm tired of it. I'm fifty-five years old. I've seen thousands of deaths. I've picked up boxes of babies, children. There comes a time where we need to step up so that we can protect our children and the future for our children.
I don't activate the chat because pardon me. Still not got that yet. So I feel like do not stand here for your, because you say that you would put up this meet. And I feel like it's very important that you meet with grassroots organizations like myself and many others who is really out there standing in front of life for the police accountability and also by our communities that are doing things within the prison system and things like that. So I just want to say today I stand before you guys and to hear you guys' party, it's not part of it, part of y'all's, but I'm giving notice that I'm standing this out there for the family, about a young man that was killed from an officer who is still being paid and actively on the, on the force while he's going through the investigation through COBA. There's no way in the world that if a, if a, a young civilian is killed by the police and it may be wrongdoing on the police or overkill by the police, whatever paper, if it's any foul play, until that investigation is proven and done, what really was the cause of a civilian being killed, the officer should not go through because he can't be arrested and it can't be another person who was killed. I think that's many officers because nothing would never really done to that person before to see him now itself. He is proven innocent or guilty. And it's crazy that, again, police are human, just like us, we the same blood. But you guys have different rules from regular civilians. You guys get in trouble for doing things mistakenly or personally and not being put in prison or on house margins like we have to, until we go to trial and be proven innocent and guilty, it's just not right and enough is enough with that. Like he told me that you're going to hold, ain't my two minutes ago, babe. He told me he was going to hold the police accountable. Well, when do you start doing it? Is this officer and the family is here and they will express his name and the situation. He needs to be off the force until that investigation is done and COBA needs to move at a more faster pace because there's no reason that these incidents take years for them to come up with assets for the families. There's waiting for, uh, justice for, for their loved ones.
Now, remember, when that tells nobody we have that happens through an investigation by an oversight body, not internal. So until that, that investigation is complete, it doesn't come to me until they complete the investigation. So I need everybody to understand that we can't just get rid of officers. There is an investigation and once that investigation unfolds. So just like right now, the, the shooting, the miracle brought up, it's going to, uh, be released tomorrow. That's being investigated. And until the investigative bodies do their work, it doesn't even get to us at this point. So we have to wait until those, those investigative bodies do their work. So I would say this, when there's accountability and people are being held accountable, you have to hold everybody accountable. Not just one body because it's deeper than me. So I, I get you on that. And if you hang them around till the end, we'll find out about that meeting.
My name is Michael Michael, you know, it's like back to the city of Chicago. I'm a family resident, please, please stand.
So the next three names, we have Richard Barnes, Taylor Vermeil, yeah, and Mr. Robert Walker. Uh, and Kamari Town after we let Mr., um, I don't know, the last name.
Yeah, I apologize, but they were already standing there. So I let you go.
The family resident, please, please stand. This family is going to turn, they're hanging next week on April fifteenth, superintendent's deal. And I want to address you that about the outrage I'm about to tell by activists in Chicago. I'm an activist, I'm called Murder of Black Women in Chicago. I am the activist, other than this person, Black Women in Chicago. So there is our, there is a, that is for my women's freedom. I don't see anyone else in this community. I'm not in the streets. I'm standing in the corners, addressing the issue in our community. So please, please follow my work, follow my website, www.cuoutdoor.com. There's a website, there is. For the victim person and unsolved murder of black women in Chicago. Now, my family here is standing there. This family is going to have what's been described in, in, throughout the COBA investigation. Next week, this family is going to get the decision of what COBA has said about what the murder of, who murdered their son. Resident Page Jr., Fernando Ruiz, uh, numbered one, two, nine, three, five. And he's still actively on the force. Still actively here, I need to check, actively standing as a hip, absolutely not. And the same time, another time, he had to stand there with that pain, with that picture at the top of his mother and father. Still there. Father, what have we done about the school of justice that is under the federal statute that it changed the driving? And the post-hire can bring, finally, this young man did nothing to deserve to move his life. He was simply going to a funeral. He was simply minded and all made it contrary to what your parents did. Or in a press conference, in line for regimen, essentially bringing it to the vehicle, to the vehicle. That's totally incorrect. There's a complete lack. So what's going to be done when it comes to accountability of telling the public the correct information instead of shaming, victim shaming, that matter? What's the next one again? We can expect a little bit of that. If that is about finding and following their way of reporting, how to put their information, and that's certainly narrative. But just the family wishes a letter of justice. Thank you so much.
So the three names, I'll call them again, Taylor Trameau, Kamari Town, Rich Barnes.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, cool. Thank you for the education. Um, so uh superintendent commissioner, um, I I first want to start by expressing uh, you know, the the, you know, my my support for the struggle for justice for Dexter Reed. And I have to start talking to you superintendent because of something you said in a press conference a few weeks ago. You said that you were going to use the work that C D D did policing the protests against NATO when NATO came to town as a model. I happen to be have been one of the main organizers of the march against NATO. And what we saw was not a model of police. What we saw was pretty crazy stuff. I want to read to you from an entry from a national lawyer's bill attorney. The week before the NATO summit, a video was posted on social media that showed police questioning young activists about Occupy Chicago. Um, and uh, this is what the attorney wrote. They were driving in a car and were pulled over without any kind of justification or reason by the Chicago Police Department. They were surrounded by police and they were questioned for a long period of time about what they were doing in Chicago, why they were here to protest, what their political affiliations were. One officer can be heard in the video saying, we'll come back for you, each and every one of you. Police also made references to the nineteen sixty-eight Democratic National Convention in Chicago, where protesters were violently beaten by National Guards and cops. And so in the videos, the officer one says, you like? He knows these guys know sixty-eight. They know all about sixty-eight. Wasn't they sick back in sixty-eight? C P D Officer Two, Billy Club to the fucking skull. That is not a model of police.
Um, just real quick, let me let me address that. That sounds like a traffic stop. When when I talk about training and the NATO training, I'm talking about our response to the possibility of civil unrest and protests. Every single thing that we did was rooted in First Amendment training, Fourth Amendment training, the same thing that's happening right now. That training was built around best practices and also worst practice. In two thousand and two, the Chicago Police Department was sued for six point seven million dollars in their response to the World Trade Organization. There were some major, major mistakes made there. We made it certain that we didn't make those mistakes. People were corralled with no route to leave. We addressed it. We made sure that every member of the crowd could hear the dispersal order, which is why we put an L R A N out there to make sure that everyone could hear it. We had less than ten lawsuits after multiple days of thousands and thousands of people converging upon the city. I remember you saying that we had batons as big as table legs. We were not allowed to carry a baton more than twenty-one inches. That's all we trained. So the key, the key is this. When we train our officers, which we gave them forty hours of training, we didn't have the disrespect. We didn't have the excessive force. And we're training like that again to make sure that our officers are engaging properly, making sure that there's no escalation and to make sure that our officers are policing constitutionally. I couldn't agree even more. So what we do, we we have dealt with a lot of pro- progress. Um, because we know that sometimes these these young kids, a lot of people think that these young kids are just bad, bad kids. A lot of these kids just don't get the guidance. They they don't have anything at home. Um, and they may come from a broken. So we have to do something to provide resources uh for those kids. One of the things that we used to do partnering with people and what we still do right now, custom notifications, where we would get with the other agencies who could provide wraparound services for families, especially those kids who are engaging in violence and we know that they're either going to commit a violent act or have one committed against them. And we reach out, provide resources for the family, even in times relocation. So a lot of people have taken us up on that and it is saving some lives, but we need to do more. So we we actually um have meetings coming up uh with uh juvenile probation. So it's things that we need to really look at. We need to expand upon our states. That's an excellent question. So the mayor, Mayor Johnson, talks about the full force of government. This is where now all of those other agencies who are supposed to be providing those wraparound services and reaching out to communities, that's when those agencies need to step up. So it it I I'm going to take what you just said and make sure that I get back to the mayor's office with that information.
Yeah. My name is Taylor. This works in immigration justice. I'm also part of the police. Um, and I'm also a person directly impacted by a traffic stop. Uh, the problem is that you want to both focus on the fact of uh the stuff that is. Um, but even though that's true, uh whatever changes you'll make, it'll only last, you know, very, very soon. And so I have, um, you know, that the problem there is more, more. Um, so do you do you support working with this is the uh T N A to a to end perpetual traffic stop through the department policy?
So here's what I'll tell you. Um, traffic stops are going into the consent decree. Um, that's a decision that I made. So this will be here long lasting after I'm gone. So this is a commitment that I made to make sure that we get a handle on this situation. So we've had meetings about this. It's just a matter of time as to how we get it in, when we get it into where we're putting it in there. But I'm serious about this and this will be a part of our consent decree.
I also have a report from Impact of the Week, so we did a report last year, well, perpetual um topic stuff that I'd like to give you.
I I actually have it, but I'm written. Thank you. I'm not great. I I've written, but I'll take it. Thank you.
Hi, Nick. Three speakers, Andrew Torrance, Max Brandon, Jordan Gaston.
I was asked about your nomination. All right. I thought she was a great candidate. I thought she was a great person to step in at the time that we needed to step in based on what was the haters of private violence at that time. I thought that she was the right person. She understood right what was going on. But I always believed that you never would have the tools to do a job that you did. Every attitude that you gave to each and every person, you pointed to eight meaningful rocks. That's right. And that's very important for you to be able to explain to the community why this false belief in your role as superintendent. Oh. Can you pause my sign?
Put the mic up. Good choice. It's a more to that. Put the mic up.
Okay. You want to be like most superintendents who get drained out of the rug and underneath cause because you got the community with its false hope about the role because you're not educating them. We're not giving them significant political education right around.
Not in schools.
Um. I learned so much in my P A program. I learned something I have to warn you to do and shit, right? But I found a lot of things that's extremely interesting. It's about right the history of police and races. And that's very important when you talk about eighty-seven and eighty-six percent of these traffic stops being black people. We're not saying minorities. We're saying black people. And a lot of the conflict is coming because of young black people are standing up and trying to articulate a right that they fully don't understand. That's very important. What started these conversations and a lot of this violence here. So here's the question. What are some of the implications for racialized segregation of policing function? And what are some discriminatory impacts specifically? Right?
It's exactly what's maybe I I I didn't. So when we talk about the history of police, we're still trying to get out from under John Birch, right? Right? I understand this. The history of police. I know it. I used to compete in all your heritage. I understand it. The bottom line is that you said something that made sense. I'm trying to articulate a right that I don't understand. The problem is education and educating ourselves on what it is we need to know. And I tell you this, when I'm sitting here, I'm going to tell you what you need to know. I'm not going to tell you what you want to hear. How will I be different from other superintendents? I don't judge other superintendents, but what I'm going to tell you is this. There are things that I will not tolerate. And what I will not tolerate is profile. What I will not tolerate is disrespect. What I not what I not tolerate is unprofessional, but there will be accountability for those things because one thing leads to the next. If we want to rebuild the communities, the first thing that we have to do is be able to openly admit and accept the truth about the past. From that point, that's the only way we're going to move forward. Now, if we're going to move forward, here's the key. We have to have these open conversations. Because if we don't have these open conversations and everything I say, the moment that I open my mouth is bull, we're never going to get beyond it. So now we sit and we educate each other. This is what happened when we had the teen summit, when those young teenagers came in and sat with us to get a clear understanding of what it is and how they should be dealing with the police and how we should be dealing with them. Once our officers get humiliated with people of the community and understand the struggle, they will not sit and judge me. The only way that that can happen is for us to have these conversations that we have right now. But those conversations cannot be adversary. I cannot be offended because you told me the truth and you shouldn't be offended because I told you the same. So when it comes to this, there are certain things that I will not tolerate. We're built, we have built a diverse force, but we still have work to do. We we have stepped into something that most police departments have struggled with. Thirty to thirty, trying to be a thirty, at least thirty percent of this department is women. It's been a struggle. Now to bring in not just minorities, but a list of police forces diverse. We shouldn't be eliminating anybody of any race. We don't just need white police officers, black police officers, female police officers. We need good police officers. And that's what we are working toward. Now, I'm just going to tell everybody here this right now. I've been here a little over six months. I don't have a magic wand. It's not going to change overnight, but it will change. And as time goes, you will be able to see those changes. And what I told you here today was a small change, but those incremental changes are going to lead to the greater good in this department. And I have every confidence in the world that we will build a greater part.
First of all, I want to uh say to the foundation of those who did interact by the laws of no one's uh through interaction with the police department, I wish you all justice. And I'd like I want to uh, I want to talk a little bit about the conversation about the convention this coming and what you say is going to happen. And I need the community to understand that the police department has a job to do. And over the past years, they've done a lot of the wrong. And you're trying to make some change. But the community needs to know that among you stands anarchists. Okay, and I hope you know what anarchists are. Okay, they're the people who come here and talk to you about all the good they do and tell you what they're going to do to help you. And they stand behind you and throw a rock and out there. So you don't keep what we have to be prepared for that. Don't be a fool and fall for that talk. Okay, because they are among you. Uh, I also want to comment on the spy stuff. We need not the shot spot. Thank you so much. We need to keep that shot spot. We get a quicker reaction time from the shot spotter than we do from police. And the people need to understand that's because of O E M C, not police, O E M C dispatch. And then I'd like you to look at superintendent, the re-institutes of the cadet program the way of us back in the seventies and eighties, where the children from the community and the high school uh came to work the desk and decided whether or not they wanted to do the law enforcement. And they learned a little bit about police and they take a look.
Well, the mayor, I tell you, if we can get more people because we have a cadet program. So we do have a debt program. Um, we also have the C P F T A program. If you're not familiar with it, it's Chicago Police Fire Training Academy. Basically, you have a student who's a junior, senior in high school. They come into the program, they learn at the fire academy, they learn at the police uh academy, they learn about law and a few other things. Um, they can become M Ts, firefighters or police officers because once they successfully complete that program, they now get a ride to a junior college, a city college for uh at least two years and they get their credentials and it keeps them on a straight and narrow until they get in. So we have those programs. So anybody who knows any kids who want to get involved, please just uh let them know to go to the website. We get them involved. What's that? Yes. No, I suffer. Just judge your.
Evening, everybody. Um, my name is Henry. I'm a part of the Coalition. Um, so my question, since you've been appointed officer, you said one of those traffic stops on serious crimes and dangerous driving. Um, I'm separate from you. I know you is a whole also. Um, last week, we saw a report that said that showing that senior rather to president there's only going to spike increase and um uh, sorry. There's only been a spike increase. I'm sorry. Uh, site decreasing stops and the overall TV is still making large number of stops for minor reasons. I talked about that back and around communities specific. So real quick, I just want to mention some numbers real quick for both. Since the start of your tenure as superintendent, eighty-one percent of all stops Since the start of your tenure as superintendent, eighty-one percent of all stops, um, regardless of black and brown drivers. All of the each represent about twenty-nine of the population in the city was threatened. Only fourteen percent of those traffic stops proceeding were for white drivers, although they make up thirty-three percent of the population. Less than one percent of all traffic stops resulted in a recovery for fire on the quarter of twenty-twenty-three and twenty-two, twenty-three overall. And lastly, forty-four percent of traffic stops in twenty-two, twenty-three were expired and popular registrations. Twenty-three percent were headlights, 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 headlights. That's almost seventy percent. So all that being said, your focus is on dangerous driving, serious crimes. Why you continue to make huge numbers of minors at the top of things like fire restriction, headlights, headlights on black and brown vehicles.
So what you're reading is a report from twenty-twenty-three. So in twenty-twenty-three, I took over, except to lay off. Those changes that are being made, that were being made, and you've seen a slight decrease in even just those three months. So you're reading all a bunch of numbers that happened right into my head. However, however, let me just let me finish. The, here's the deal. I'm sitting here telling you today that we got work to do. Because I acknowledge that we have work to do. So there's training going on right now. I visit every, I I visiting groups and districts to talk to them about what the expectations are. So this is not something that's going to happen overnight. We're talking thousands and thousands of officers that we have to train out of this. Again, again, there are things that we have to do, and I'm putting things in place to get those things done. So I I could appreciate the fact that you you stepped up here prepared with the issue. So I expect the next time in twenty-twenty-five, when we're having this conversation, you'll see a much different time.
Since you started, remember the next thing that I have to start.
That is not true. You're looking at twenty-twenty-three. If you read the report, then that was crazy. In twenty-twenty-three, I was appointed for the five to three months. In those three months, there was a decrease in right here in the in the report. Doesn't matter how small it is, what you're saying, I just disproved what it is you're saying. So now, when you look from January this year till now, we've seen a decrease of forty-six thousand traffic stops year to date. That's just from January first to today's date. And in that, we've seen a fourteen percent increase in felony arrests and gun arrests. So it tells me now that we're not just doing traffic stops. Now, we we still have some work to do. I'm not going to tell you what's not happening. We still have some work to do. And I'm working on it, but it tells you that the change is starting to happen. So twenty-twenty-five, when we sit and we have this conversation, if that report looks the same, you can drive it through the month, but I expect it's going to be different.
Our next three speakers are Huaero, Winters, Cecilia Butler, and T One Sins.
Thank you. Very good. I'll sometimes say, uh, since superintendent, please don't rob us of our dignity to uh stand with families who have been victimized by police violence. If I could show up and every last single time someone was hurting the city, I would do that, but we don't have that kind of protection. So I'm Ray White here, and I'm the founder of the four-month movement, P L Lori. Another family is hurting, traumatized, and devastated. Well, we know it's up to some extent that over fifty rounds had been fired into the car and body of Dexter B. Jonah on March twenty-first. And the same district that killed my sixteen-year-old nephew, P L Lori, on April eleventh, and also P L resident Clay on an open city street, they fired fifty rounds of ammunition on an open city street. We cannot talk about building trust, community policing, or constitutional policing without talking about civil policing. And I'm talking about respect, obliging, and well-mannered to families who have impacted our police violence. And the youth support policy is stated at the very beginning, the sanctity of life, the department higher priority is the sanctity of human life and all aspects of their conduct. They were, they were asked with full most regard for the preservation of human life and the and safety of all persons involved. And I don't know that happened on that day. And it said, for community, it is inappropriate to exercise youth support because it damages partnerships and diminishes the public trust. The officers' behavior speaks to the fragility of the Chicago police departments, the inadequate and deficient youth support trainers. The department is supposed to act at some point and restore justice, but that does not apply to families impacted by police violence. But store objection means that there has been harm, the harm has been acknowledged, addressed, and repaired. And that doesn't happen between human love and Chicago police, not by whereas department members are bound by badges, we are bound by blood and by love. I thought about that with French. I thought about that with the president. I paid for their family, and I sent those to the fifteenth district to my office. Not because I had to, because I care about all people, especially when I heard. You remember your fallen and the liberation and healing times, but we remember our soul in every day, every holiday, every Thursday, every day today. And we are traumatized every time it happens. We do not need more. The officers have thirty days of death duty, and then they're back on the streets. The officer that shot, he killed my nephew, was promoted to a detective. He's still in the same district. This means he's working for others, his families, and I don't know how that happened. Shot him in front of my nephew, and he was promoted to a detective in the same community where he caused tremendous harm. Civil officers are not justice, and again, things you fight is offered by any next fair, whatever challenge you have to go through. Do not hide them. Do not rot into the poor, after. Not about family policing. Some of these officers are working to the fore. It's not happening without police policy, a registered union contract.
Uh, tonight I won't be addressing superintendent. I'll be addressing uh by the prevention organization. Uh, how many organizations, the vice provincial organization? How many might be? Tonight I'll be addressing the activists so-called, because I wonder what activism is, especially right now in this time. Um, it's it's such self-centeredness, activism. It's a me, me, me. What I'm doing, I didn't know. No, it's it's just all the often times, there's somebody pointing back at you. But we know that, you know, you should be recognized by others. You should be recognized by the work that you do. You should be recognized by the effectiveness of the work. It ain't effective. You're not making diamonds, y'all. But I won't be addressing superintendent. I won't be addressing those organizations and the people who keep housing our children as villains, as monsters, as a problem. But we adults, I'm not going to address superintendent, not tonight, catch you around the back. I would talk to the people that think they doing something, but not doing anything. The only thing I'd say to the C P D is, please don't come out of the school. We need you there. Um, and also about the next, the rethink we need for these organizations to not happen like it's gonna be black kids tomorrow against white cops or cops in the streets, period. That's what I, last night was the worst. So I'm just, I just wanted to protect the kids. So that's my, that's my speech about the, the kid. The considerations for them, to not put them and make them political pieces or political pawns. So y'all push for more grant funding and shit. So long as they step, they're supposed to be, because this black blood running the streets, these are bringing stuff. The same people that had these long language conversations, but the babies don't even know they're part of it though. They don't even know they been put on the floor. Y'all don't know that. Y'all don't know that tomorrow, y'all supposed to be picked against Chicago. Possibly here and in other states. I don't know what it is. But I know that that is true. I know that a bunch of people, you know, carrying a narrative here, sharing propaganda. But propaganda ain't doing our children. So it can't happen. It can't go down that way. Y'all gonna have to push that funding in another way. I'll be addressing you tonight, though.
Today, I'm here today to talk to you about for the last two weekends, a one line. Last two weekends, they have come and they do the drag racing in the Berlin. I live on the block full of seniors, and that block is white. I called the police. Now I'm one of them. Three times. I have a record of it. Oh, where it coming? Where you at? Nobody showed up. Nobody. This didn't take place for ten minutes. They started at two fifteen, y'all, and ended at three thirty. In the morning. Burning out. But y'all have police posted on sixty-third and College Road, all day long. Five minutes away from me. Nobody showed up. My name, only older male on the block, he's out there arguing with them. I told them, go back in, because they were shooting. Go back in. I called the police. They coming. Nobody showed up. Nobody. And it's the second weekend. Shouldn't have happened the second time. I was out of town for the first one. But I'm going to see my auntie soon as she get her butt in the office. Because I'm pissed. Because we live on the quiet block. Not a lot of teenagers. Matter of fact, probably none. No little kids. Working me. And you woke me up. I didn't go back to sleep. What's going on? I thought they'd stolen somebody's car. But they was coming down the block the wrong way, top speed. Stop, jump me out, taking pictures. I'm like, police, you got to be calm. You gotta be calm. Nobody showed up. And that's not the only thing I call about. They don't show up. We pay our taxes. Like they do downtown. See, y'all stop, get downtown. Stop. Can't stop where I'm at? I pay my taxes. Keep my daughter clean. I pay my own bill, my daughter's bill. And I don't get no services. But then y'all say they don't want to work with y'all. I've got three calls to y'all. Trick it. Want to tell them?
Can you give me that address? And and there's a, there's a young man standing there behind you, um, wearing his suit. Give me the address. I will address that because I wish I heard it. I was there far from you. That will be addressed. And it will be addressed. The district will be addressed, and the district command will know about this. We will make this, we we too. They may need it.
Our next three speakers, Jesse Mojeski, Kimberly Bailey, and Eugina White.
Kimberly Bailey, please. I'm Cecilia Butler. This happened in Washington Park. I live next door to Miss Bailey. And yes, this is the second time it happened on fifty-ninth and Indiana, where we've been complaining for decades now of the street light problem. You know, we need a top-down. They had one on Michigan, you know, uh, Walmash, but we need one on Indiana. Yes. The first time I heard it, I thought they were on State Street. No, they were in front of, down the street from my house. With this loud racing. And the problem that appears is that if we're gonna have racing downtown on State Street, Michigan Avenue, they feel they can come now to the community and and act the same way. But on fifty-eighth, one more block up, fifty-eighth and Indiana, there's four ways. Four corners that are vacant. There's no cars, there's no houses, there's nothing. And perhaps the police need to strategize as to how they can catch them as they leave the light on fifty-eighth and on fifty-ninth, add it to fifty-eighth street and wait for them. Because that's exactly how they do it. They 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 play games on fifty-ninth and Indiana. You know, doing their willings and all that kind of stuff. And all of a sudden, they're flying down Indiana going north. So let's strategize, but you know why we can't? Because I have a problem with our cat people in the second district. I'm not trying to name no names and but there's a problem that I've been dealing with since before COVID. And then someone put set the Washington Park Fieldhouse on fire, which is where cats used to meet. And we met several weeks. And now I can't even get a uh, an email talking about a beat that happened uh this last week. If I knew about that meeting, I would have been there telling them about what's happening on Indiana. So the second district cats, they know me, Cecilia Butler. Get in contact, because I want a meeting. And I expect the police, because from what you said, superintendent, that we need to work together. If you have a tax department that's not really letting people know what they should know, then it's not working.
I do, I do want to just reiterate, we have a few more speakers, so if we all can be respective of time so that those who signed up have an opportunity to share their thoughts. Thank you. I I will be a little bit more stern. I've been very lean and out of respect for community and this being a platform for you all. But I do want to respect other community mentors who want an opportunity to speak.
You're very fair, Ms. Here. I ain't put it.
Um, hi, my name is Virginia. Um, I'll say this short. I just wanted to say, superintendent, um, thank you for, you know, I I would appreciate uh saying that you need our resources and our communities and that we would all benefit from having more of those services if that's for our community. Um, and so I'd also just like to invite you to think about what would be possible if, even though the fourth of that one point nine billion dollars you put into this police department and all this training that you're referring to, um, could instead be reinvested into our communities and our schools, our infrastructure, our healthcare, trauma response centers. Um, and specifically about the investing nine point nine million dollars should be available for home access services as shot spotter gets de-divisioned. Um, so my comment is just to kind of say that we do not need shot spotter. We support the de-divisioning of that service. Um, we don't need more money to go towards analogy that doesn't work and doesn't actually prevent gun violence. Especially like Rob Parton, even that it is not, we do not want to prevent it. Um, and so I would like to support moving those funds for services that would actually be like you and me. Respond to those calls, and if you're going to keep that kind of service, like that information can be given into actual life-saving practitioners as opposed to officers who, quite frankly, I don't think can actually support the the theme. That is just what I thank you.
I'm Jesse, former elected president under Illinois House Bill Board seven seven three. Former department's representative, the Department of Children and Family Services Task Force for duly involved youth under former Governor Rauner, related to the Laquan McDonald shooting. What brings me to the microphone tonight is the corruption, the drugs, and the gangs. And the officers across the city of Chicago, lack of ability, as well as the office of the superintendent's lack of ability to then hold those officers accountable. I am consistently emailing superintendent. There is zero excuse, as my office has always had. Do not be able to communicate, because when we do not communicate, it goes to the loss of life. Similarly, as to what happened in the Laquan McDonald shooting. When we have a governor on FBI wiretap. It's very simple, I've been Pritzker, FBI wiretap on YouTube. And you'll hear how blatant the corruption is. That has existed in the city of Chicago for far too long. And we're talking about coming back from old policing, right? We were six billion dollars in debt in the state of Illinois, now we're sixty billion dollars in debt in the state of Illinois. And we have to find new money and new dollars for the young people of tomorrow, for the citizens across the city of Chicago? Call your office, I've emailed your office, I've contacted with numerous federal agencies. What is the answer to any of my questions? Am, am I, as a citizen of Chicago, not worth a response? As a former elected president, am I not worth a response? As former department's representative, am I not worth a response? Sir, please.
Everybody's worth a spot.
Then why have I not gotten one?
I'd like to know what your question. We'll talk, we'll talk.
I don't want to talk afterward, I want to know why there's marijuana being sold two blocks away. I want to know why there's crack cocaine being sold blocks away. Okay, sir.
Thank you.
Response is Pritzker gave.
The next set of speakers, uh, Krista Noel, June Northley, Pastor Doyle, and then Tara Henderson.
I spoke, and I said that I heard the superintendent saying, I perceive human beings. But I said that I never heard him say Dexter Reed's name. So far, we've got five cleanclothes cops, and let's not discount that this is a tactical team. Little, the worst guys on the street stopping a young man for what we still don't know the reason for. So it's gotta be two shots. And him responding by shooting one of them, and that's okay, depending on the approach, the circumstances, and clear announcement of them being police. Just in case you want to know, you can't tell they're a police officer, you can shoot. Especially if they doing something stupid. That's right. One cop unloading a gun three times, they have eighteen bullets in their guns. Three times unloading a gun and reloading it is fifty-four bullets. That's one cop. We got three other cops shooting with eighteen bullets in their gun. This shooting could be as many as one hundred and eight bullets. Shot Spotter picked up over fifty. Where they go? Allegedly, Dexter shot eleven. The cop that was injured, from my understanding, was shot.
Thank you, that's time.
The shot, the cop that was injured was shot in his wrist. Okay, he was not greatly injured. But we have a dead young man over a traffic stop here, and we don't know him.
We bring it to a close, thank you, Ms. Howard.
Considered pre-coalition is asking for sanction. No cop can reload the gun three times to shoot an human victim. If you got a tiger or a bear in front of you, you can reload three times, but not on a human victim. Programs put in place immediately to limit interactions.
Thank you.
Including rental tickets, I don't even want you talking to anybody anymore. I don't want to have to talk to you, so don't talk to nobody, don't come baby, I got you. Your damages should be in the millions, and he's probably better get caught on y'all. And he better ask for forty-five billion dollars. Glenn Shaver have the in-arbitrary stop sent arrest.
Thank you.
Because I know it would find.
We have a few more.
Tactical teams and fire the cops immediately, and don't, don't tell me I don't know what it takes to fire a cop.
Thank you.
That's right. Well, we, what we know in the third district is that there's part turnover when it comes to commanders. And when the neighborhood says, we like this commander, is always ignored. We've had three commanders that we liked. And they took them, and it wasn't even like they got promoted, they were a lot, a lot promoted. We're, we're asking, what is it that we need to do, and why are we missing our, our commanders are leaving? That's one question. The other question is the district council. What do y'all do, because we don't see y'all in us. You're gonna be there, some of the stuff that they're asking about, if it's a police accountability. Some of these things should be answered through the district council. With our district council, we don't see them. We, they put up a post somewhere, somebody might find out about it. But they're not working with the community organization, my organization organizes block by block. I have access to over seven hundred block clubs, I should know when there's a meeting.
It's true.
The other thing. The, the second decree. We should be partnering, and there should be resources provided for organizations like mine to get out the word, to help or educate the community members about, not just have a meeting by the police department, but say, hey, they look at their clients. What do you need to get the people in the room? These are the things that are missing, if you say, partners, friends, let's work together. This is what's missing. So I was just like, I want to answer those questions.
Uh, really quickly, I just want to acknowledge your concern, I really can have district counselors in the room, I'm not sure all of the ones from third district. So I, so, the commissioner, and I have been to one of your meetings very early on. I was invited out, I showed up, and the young ladies waved their hands, so you're representing. They know that I'm already available to come out into the community. And I would also say, to have a conversation with your third district counselors that are in the room. So I just wanted to give you that point, please.
Uh, lastly, uh, Commander Branch is going to be there, please.
How long, you don't need him till you hear, we need him to build relationships.
The Commander Branch, the commanding right person to be over there, he's going to be there. So the movement of the commanders that happened before I got here. I want to make sure that they're in tenure in each district, um, when those commanders build relationships. If they move, I want to make sure that they make the proper transition to any commander that's coming in with an introduction to the community, so they know who to communicate with. But right now, you don't have to worry about Commander Branch though.
They'll take them, they'll take you.
They, they, you know, those are the rules, not getting.
Superintendent, tell me, even, how? First of all, thank you very much for making this, for being elegant. No, sorry, sorry, Professor Boyd. Uh, first of all, thank you very much for making this business, uh, May twenty-fifth, and correct questions, correcting the base to pay it last week. By, uh, my, Lindsay, the park supervisor, just want to thank you very much for accepting on the spot becomes amateur partner. Because when you ask a direct question, I've noticed you tend to get very direct. I want to thank you for that. Say, that relates to the color, I am a Julian ice bread. I say that, because in this building, which leads to my question. In this building, your colleague, Fire Commissioner Annette Nance Holt made the ultimate sacrifice on May tenth, two thousand and seven. When she saw her son Blair, a two thousand and eight veteran for the last time. I changed my question, I was sitting there, because I heard exactly what you said, because that's how we were taught at Julian's List. I heard what you said, said about the outbreak. What, so my question would be, what are you expecting? Specifically, our African-American community to do the partner with you to decrease the violence in Chicago?
And that's an excellent, excellent question. And, and that's what we need to get to the bottom, so here, here's what I would tell you. And one of the things that has been helpful, I'm sure that you've seen me on TV live, talking about arrests that we made in situations. Uh, I spoke earlier about an eleven-year-old was, uh, murdered, that someone should have been in prison who was stalking a woman, and she had a lifetime order protection against him. We had people from the community who were willing to give us information. And within about two hours of that murder, we had him in custody. Um, we had a sixteen-year-old who murdered three people in a home. And one of the people that he murdered was a fifteen-year-old. Um, and because of that, that triple homicide, we were able to apprehend him, which he was out in the suburbs somewhere, based on information that we partnered with the community again. If you watch those press conference, conferences, we gave everyone credit. Especially the community for setting up in those situations, to taking a violent person off the street and then getting some type of justice. Um, can't bring back those lives, we would like to do more to prevent. So if we get information that we know that we can prevent lives from being taken, that's the best thing in the world. Because if, if, if we're responding afterwards, that person is already gone. We want to prevent these things. So if we can partner and have information, one of the things that we're doing with our protective division, the street and the envelope, well, we already have the envelope program in place, big of services, that's our family liaison officers. We're trying to build upon that, and we're also trying to hire civilians to help us with that. Because sometimes people are not necessarily comfortable talking to the police. But if they have someone who is a civilian, who they think they can relate to a little more, they may be willing to give more information. So we're building in that way. So again, you know, people who are willing to do that type of work, their jobs are available for them to help raise that gap. So that's what we're looking for.
And so we have our final three speakers, I have Richard Clay, I have Joey Imobia. Sorry, Joey, and Larry Richard.
See him, he was a Richard.
This is my son, Russell Randall Clay, Joey. He was murdered April fifteenth. Now, I'm talking to him more, on his way to pay his respects, who he framed for, like, a criminal, he only went to a funeral. They say they were on a de-escalation mission that morning. They escalated to the third power. They killed my son, I can't breathe, I'm waiting, I've been waiting, all I get is no answers. No email answers, no phone calls, no answers, I can't breathe. My keys can't move, his look, his brothers can't breathe, his daughter asked about him all the time, I couldn't get attention. Because they said that we could really mess up, and if you have a kid, put yourself in my position. And he said that if you, if, 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 yeah, did it, how you handled it. It wasn't no steps to that, I don't know. They, my son, and he thinks that we want the federal, so he thinks this creep, that's what it's all. Isn't it, no foot policy, enough of them. Don't change, he wasn't doing that, they said he was leaning in a car. Have you seen, have you, did you watch the video?
I haven't, I haven't, but I watched.
Watch it?
Yes.
They said on lock, no good that morning, that he was leaning in a car. Black respect. He didn't have any words, but he was, he was standing by himself, saying, you know, he tried to pose to his man. You know, that's what he was doing when he got to. You know, so I think we need answers, we had COVID, and I responded. Nobody had responded, wouldn't you want answers? We don't even allow them to see my son every now and then, I have never saw my son again, since he left me. But each time, I never, never allowed him to see my baby, I have never saw my baby. I wasn't allowed to talk to him, I couldn't see him, I never was able to, I thought I had a baby. Anybody knows somebody, like, they hide his work, I don't want to see my son, they could have gave him that. If he had been there an hour, thirty minutes, you couldn't let me see him, when you see a woman, they didn't do nothing. We've been treating him like a cruel, he's been treating him like a cruel, he, he doesn't have a cruel back. Here, he has four cars. That's going to give my son, boy, they're going to give you back to his first of all. They're going to give you back to, and I'll be outside, and you say, it's like a help, I'll learn. They shouldn't even know anything they learned in the first.
That's fine.
They shouldn't even, you know, how do you learn? I mean, they, 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 he was dead. Three years, I think, you know, he ain't nobody. People don't bother, and then the family, they have to sit here a whole day without an answer, then they say when they get the answer. Because you know, like, sixty years, sixty years, you be in the first, because they would be tired of it. They tell you what world that makes it. What world does it make sense? I only got doors, I have everything, ability, so I'm standing here. When I think we can make this, why would it fall, if that was true, it was silly. Who's standing here, John? What I'm doing with this paper, I'm here, I'm so, I'm going down, and it's giving, I'm, I'm, I'm. I didn't want, I didn't want to say that, and I don't see one in the future. I don't see one in the future until I do right by my son, until I do my son my father. No one's going to help me, I'm going to do it. Don't stop the next, he's taking all, he's, he's, I don't have it. I don't have any function, I can't breathe, and I don't know who's naming the word, thank you, don't walk me, don't leave. I don't want to do this. What else can I do? What else can I do?
I would follow up with COVID to see what this is, where this is, and why you're not getting answers from there. So do, we can make sure we can do that. Yes, that's all to be done right now, because COVID is doing this investigation. Because, because until the first one, these recommendations are made on COVID.
I don't want, I'm asking for some, the movement behind my family.
We're, and I'm looking to get you a response.
I'm asking for some justice, for my son. When I need him, oh my God, he's trying to help me, and I'm trying to.
I can handle it. We all grown, we all adults, we all know what it's like. I'm sure I'm right here, because they probably know who this is, but your son goes to another state, spring, break anything. And he's gonna have to do it. You just don't understand, you don't know, they don't understand those people. If you, if by all means, if somebody do something wrong, do your job. If your officer do something wrong, do your job. Do you understand? Do you understand what I'm saying? Because everybody here is in pain, man. And then it's, you know, you're talking good. Put your, you can't back themself. You know, you need other, you know, what I want to say to you is, the first thing y'all tell us, oh, it's an investigation. You know, that's the thing that y'all do. You got the video camera, you got the video on audio, you got everything in here. Why we gotta go through all these crazy challenges? To get somebody arrested, get someone running, make y'all look bad. And do a good job. Turn it on. Talk with us, man. Talk, talk, get out the street with us, man. And you know, you're sitting, like you say. You standing against Trump. You know, if you say two, you understand, I could do all this. Get out with us. Don't, cause that's, that ain't no way we get here, you know, we got, and you try anything over and over again. So, can you go here?
Hell, we're when they engage. Kind of like the bottom. From the most. That's why it's so hard.
If they want to. If they want to. They don't.
No, I'm gonna try to go there, not to, but I've been shooting my son.
That was, that was a police case that y'all. They moved. That was a police case. The civil.
Immediately.
The police case. Always kind of law, forty-five years, so I don't see that, right?
But it was.
Cause y'all didn't follow it. They called it two straight parts, that's the hospital, the hospital. They called it, they called it. They called it one part, where it's. And they got me with first. When it, when it.
Well, when it's over. What are you doing now?
They don't follow the policy, man. That's why we sitting here. Gotta plead with this guy. You know, it's to do something fun. When he sit up to tell you to do something, you gonna do something, pull up, man, pull up.
Hey, let me see.
He really like to say you pull up. Sorry, sir. Sorry, sir.
This is both hours. But taking the guess, those people that were, have become their C D S. Oh, we also believe that there were a hundred and twenty thousand traffic stops still on these areas. Which is higher than the last quarter of two twenty-three. And yet, so we also see that there's a continued trend of these potential traffic stops harming black and brown folks predominantly. And it's been concentrated on the west side where the incident happened with Dexter and Blue. And so we will also see in the trend is that these potential stops have not actually stopped of the reduction of arrests, citation, contraband, and so they're not working. And so what we're asking for is not only for it to, you know, you talked a lot today about, there are a lot of different agencies around, like Invictor and things like that. But a new power that you do have is implement policy in collaboration with Community Commission for Safety. You don't have to wait. But you work in a long time with the community to implement policy. And so my question to you is, why wait now, why wait to put a potential stop in the consent decree? When we know that the consent decree is low, when you know that it's only combined by a percent, when we can actually do something today?
So, the answer to you, why is it, we are doing something today? The reason that it's being put into the consent decree because of someone who I mentioned this earlier. They say, you can fix it while you're here, but when you're gone, it goes back to the same thing. Not a consent decree. So I think in long term, so we are putting values in place.
We would evaluate the, the impact of the technical stop. We already have the data. Community has already spoken out about the impact and we heard from directly impacted. But what we can do long term is implement policy to end potential stops, to limit the, the low-level violations and to also gain suspicious prison sentence searches as well. And you have that power now to do that.
Good evening. And let me start out because I have my health policy position. I have destroyed it. I have not sworn or present law. I have a law of the United States of Gablewood, the seventh certitude for the last forty-seven years. Okay? I have thrown law enforcement. I'm not a law company, it's not my law, it's more. The problem is, it looks like there's, you know, you don't make no gap. They, uh, they're just picking up, and they're picking up a lot of gap. That's what the difference is, bro. Because people, everybody wants to say the cop's this, the cop's that. So do you know how many children under the age of ten, what year was it? I don't, as he say, I don't hear any outrage about that. Okay, for, as, as far as for Larry Snellings. When the. Well, I'm glad that you finally came to someplace to go to. Okay, it's, it's. Okay, um. We're not fully, evenly structured police staffs. I'm going A C, A C L, who's living in my neighborhood. Okay, well. Well, I think, you know, I'm going to come here. I'll be a charge, I'm going to strip to the work, to kill the, to kill the children. So you say it's okay. It's okay to, to let a child, because he's a teenager, go to high school, and show quick children, put an angle bracelet, and bring a gun and stolen property to murder. You don't have to.
People all say that, you know? You have to. Law enforcement. Starting to train, so, what are the questions being debated? Because I have a child, there's seven times, you know, if you have a choice, one.
Okay, look how many, uh, person see driving around the city all the time, no brakes. So, so what you saying, well, we're black, so we shouldn't ever drive in. Cause I can't have no money. So let me drive. But the parents people go, but let me drive. And I know, so. Spend all these dollars, lose this guy. Um. The car, if their life, their time, they deal. Made me so happy. When you stood up there and you say, we don't hold these kids accountable. They're sixteen years old. That just ain't right, man. Keep it up.
Just, real quick, listen. Okay, I appreciate the feedback and the comments forever. We're not only going to agree, but that doesn't mean we have to be disagreeing. Everybody has the right to speak up, say what you feel, say what you think. And that's what this forum is all about. Um, all I can tell you is this, I'm going to continue to do the work that is necessary to move this department forward, to fill this relationship. Now, we can believe what we wanna believe about that, but I'm going to put every. Forward to make sure that we do what we need to do so that this city isn't divided. And I'm not going to do anything or create environments where divide becomes the thing. If we're going to move ahead in this city, if we're going to get to the bottom of this crime, if we're going to raise our children in a better place, we all have to figure out how to work together to get that done. We can't be disagreeable to a point where we're unwilling to talk to each other and have a conversation and listen to what someone else has to say. I'll sit here and listen to this all day. Because I just saw a woman who was suffering at the loss of her, at the loss of her child. I've heard suffering here, someone's neck. They're suffering everywhere because regardless to who a person is who lost their lives, they belong to somebody. Right? They're somebody's family members and it doesn't matter what. So the loss of life is never a good thing. It's never a good thing. So we have to do things to be prevented with crimes, especially violent crimes. Now, that doesn't mean that there is no accountability on my side. Because if we're going to rebuild relationships, I need the best and the brightest doing it. We need to recognize where we have issues and we need to take the record back. But at the same time, when I know that these officers are going out there facing some of the most dangerous situations possible, and I've seen them save lives, and I'm telling you right now, at some point, I will put a collage together of all of the life-saving efforts where officers have got to scenes and apply tourniquets. Quick clot to stop someone from bleeding out. Apply first aid measures that save people's lives. You don't see that because it doesn't sell. Negativity sells. So we will, we will be showing and putting on display the great work that these kind of police officers are doing. We can hold them accountable and we can hold them accountable when they're wrong. But we cannot have a narrative that our offices are out here destroying communities. When I see people dying every single day at the hands of fires, gunfire, robberies. We have got to get on top of this crime. We've got to do a better job of focusing on the people who have been victimized by those who are committing violent crimes. And I'll take every hit in the world for standing up for victims. Because those are the people who have been forgotten. We cannot forget about them. We will continue to do this work.
So I want to take this opportunity to thank everyone for coming out. This evening, thank you for sharing, thank you for, uh, expressing. And I look forward to many of you doing this work, either with the superintendent, with the commission, and I'll even take the shameless, because I have a bunch of these on the west side, with the west side N double A C P. So if you're about their work, come talk to me because that's what I'm about, the work and not all of the sensationalism. And so we have a few announcements. Uh, we will be holding our final conference on April thirtieth on the north side. Center. And so I just want to thank you all again for coming out tonight. And thank you to Superintendent Larry Sneller for being here and thank for the community safe travels to everyone that I've lived.